Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Hug.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you waiting for me?
Do you want to start with the meeting remarks or do you want to start with the proclamation?
Um, I think I'm going to do both.
Okay, go for it.
But tomorrow is the inaugural game in the Professional Volleyball Association. The first game to be held in Omaha, which is significant. Omaha will finally have a professional sports team. So with that said, why don't the team members come down? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely. I thought that was Pete's job.
Right there, yeah. So we're going to have Councilman Hug read a presentation and proclamation on behalf of the Omaha Supernovas, and then we'll hear from the team, and then we'll see if other councilmembers have any remarks they'd like to add.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Hello, we are good.
Wonderful.
You had distinct pleasure of being the first for me to formally present a proclamation to. So I apologize if it's rocky. I'm not as polished as Pete is at this, but he gave me some tips and pointers. So, as I mentioned, this is the inaugural season of the Professional Volleyball Association, and the inaugural game will help happen tomorrow here in Omaha, right downtown. With us, we have...
We can introduce ourselves.
I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Okay, wonderful. I'm Diane Mendenhall, and I'm the president of the Omaha Supernovas.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Ray Wong. It's so nice to see you, and I work for the owners of City Ventures, and I'm our VP of Broadcast and Public Affairs.
Yes, and hello. Thank you for having us. Michael Stevens, I am the VP for External Operations for the club.
And I also want to thank and acknowledge the owners of the team who have the confidence and the vision to be able to make this a reality. Danny White, Chris Erickson, and Jason Derulo. And I'm sure I mispronounced that last name.
You didn't.
They didn't.
Oh, unlucky. Thanks, Pete.
You have to sing it, though. Jason Derulo.
I also want to thank Commissioner Jen Spicer, because I'm sure somebody had to make a decision of where this inaugural game is going to happen. So Jen, thanks for making it happen in Omaha. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the Omaha Supernovas are Nebraska's professional volleyball team in a newly established professional volleyball federation, and whereas pro-volleyball competition will officially begin in the United States with the Omaha Supernovas hosting the Atlanta Vibe in their first match in league history at the CHI Health Center in downtown Omaha on January 24th at 7:00 PM. And whereas the Professional Volleyball Federation includes the very best volleyball players in America and from around the world, yet only a few select stars will become supernovas. Whereas volleyball has been and continues to be a sport that Nebraskans and Omaha champion as a significant sport in our city. Now for, now therefore, bear resolve, the City of Omaha officially designates Wednesday, January 24th, as Omaha Supernova Professional Volleyball Day in Omaha, Nebraska. So...
Tomorrow's a very historic day. Thank you very much. We look forward to being there tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we'll hear from Councilmember Melton.
Oh, thank you. I'm just so excited. And I've known Jen Ray for a long time. I think you're very lucky to have her as part of the team. She's been all about the supernovas. I've seen you everywhere promoting them, and I'm just so excited for all of you for tomorrow that we have a professional team here in Omaha and that it's a professional women's volleyball team. So I can't tell you how excited I am. I'm looking forward to attending the game tomorrow. So I have a question, because I haven't been out shopping since Christmas, right? I've taken it off. Where can we get supernova gear to wear to the game tomorrow or to other games? Who's carrying the supernova stuff?
I think the best, thank you for that question. The best place to find supernova gears is Lawler's.
Lawler's is carrying it.
And Shields.
Oh, great.
Those are the two places, and you can also go to our website, supernovas.com, and Rin Sports is the official retailer of the league, and you can purchase through there, too.
Okay, but if we want to go, if we want to go buy something tomorrow afternoon...
Shields and Lawler's.
Shields and Lawler's to go buy supernova.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I'm looking forward to it. I'll be making my way to one of those places.
And at the venue.
At the, Lawler's will sell at the venue as well.
Are you going to sell any tonight at the men's Blue Jays basketball game? That would have been perfect.
Great idea, but unfortunately not.
Too late to get into that. All right. Well, I look forward to coming tomorrow, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. It's great for all three of you to be here on behalf of the Omaha vibe. Omaha's a great volleyball town, as we know, with UNO and Creighton and Nebraska and Lincoln, the Midwest, and the state of Nebraska is huge for, as a dad of three daughters, they never really played in high school, but we play leisurely, and I can tell you, I'd last two seconds with one of those girls tomahawking. I don't know how they don't break their wrists, but the athletic ability of the players is incredible, and to have a pro team here in Omaha, it's so great, and we're so happy for it. So I guess it's going to be serious trouble for the Atlanta Vibe tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to being there. It's your inaugural game, and I wish you nothing but success, and I know you'll do well in this great city of ours. Thanks for coming down today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. I, too, want to congratulate you, and actually, thank you for the investment and the, for what you're, what you're about to do for Omaha. And I think Omaha will, will pay you back in great reward for, for that investment. But I think, Diane, I met you last summer, I think it was, when we had the initial kickoff for this, for this announcement, and now what's come to fruition, and Michael reminded me how old I am by, we, I guess, first met and worked together a little bit back in the early '90s.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but Jen Ray, thank you for your promotion and investment and interest, and to Jason Derulo, and to Chris, and to Danny, their investment in Omaha. And really, the volleyball, I mean, is, I mean, we're really becoming ambassadors, not only for volleyball, but for women's sports, I think, in Nebraska and specifically Omaha. So, you know, thank you. Danny has a couple of girls. I'm the father of two girls as well, and it means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to Nebraska and our country. Thank you.
That means a lot. Thank you.
I would also just add my thanks and congratulations. Excited to see this happen, professional women's sports in Omaha, and to have you be our ambassadors and to have her be our representatives throughout the country in a really impressive array of cities that Omaha is now part of in this inaugural league. I was one of the 92,000 people that went to the game in Lincoln recently, which was super impressive, but the most impressive thing about it, I thought, was all the young women and all the young players walking around, whose faces were just lit up and excited about the sport and their futures, and seeing what success means, and I know we're going to experience that tomorrow night, too. So very much look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you so much. It means the world to us, so thank you, councilmembers, too, the proclamation, and on behalf of our owners, our staff, our coaches, and most importantly, our players. We're touched by your kind words, and we know we'll make you proud, and we couldn't be more overwhelmed with the acceptance from, that we've received from everyone in Omaha and outstate, and we've sold season tickets in nine states. So Omaha will be a destination, and we were thrilled with this opportunity. We have women that came, are coming from 10 states and two foreign countries, and they chose Omaha because of the history of what Omaha has done as far as promoting women and sports and athletics in general, and just a great community. So thank you for providing that. Thank you for your service to our community, and we're very proud to receive this proclamation.
And a preseason ranking of number one, but no pressure.
No pressure. I know, I did, I did reveal that to our players last night, and they just said exactly, "No pressure." So they did decide pressure is a privilege, so.
Well put. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding.
I wanted to give you the opportunity, maybe, too, we were talking a little bit beforehand, because it's maybe not a sellout yet, there are still good seats available, so I'll give you the opportunity to tell people, I know it's going to, there are going to be a lot of people there, but no other good seats available still, so if you want to tell us how you can get tickets, Michael.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing us to do that. Yeah, we're, we're over 10,000 in ticket sales already, so it's been amazing. Appreciate the City of Omaha and the support we've received from residents here, and, as Diane said, all throughout the state of Nebraska and even surrounding states. So we've done really well so far already. But yes, supernovas.com, there are good seats still available. Jump on that website, click on tickets, and, and come on down. It's going to be an amazing night, a historic night for volleyball and the City of Omaha. So thank you very much for letting me do that.
Thanks. See you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Adam Burke.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here and look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Voodoo Taco located at 1102 Harney Street.
This item was postponed from our January 9th meeting. The public hearing and vote on this item is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant Voodoo Taco Old Market LLC. This is for a Class C liquor license. I will note to the council that there, it was laid over because there was an issue with the finance department. I believe my client, through conversations with the finance department and their accountant, has rectified that issue as of this morning. The Voodoo Taco will be located, I believe, at the Old Michaels Cantina area in the Old Market. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Oh, I thought Mr. Harding was burst out in the queue.
Okay, would you like to yield?
Yeah.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you. Actually, I was, Ms. Johnson, but saw that it was in your district, so I thought I'd let you go first, but thank you. So I talked to Mr. Houghton beforehand, and I understand that he's here representing the, the client for the liquor license and not the occupation tax that the, that the owners have been negligent in paying to the City of Omaha from some of their other locations. So I told Mr. Houghton that I was kind of hoping that maybe one of the representatives from Voodoo would be here, because I don't think it shows the, that there are good operators if they're not paying their occupation tax, the restaurant tax, in a timely fashion. And I think it's, it's unfortunate that the ownership of Voodoo is taking advantage of its customers, in essence, to be its financial institution to a degree. I mean, they are using the funds that they collect from their customers for their own, for their own personal, not personal gain, but for the gain of the business. And I think that's unfortunate. I don't think it's, it's right to the taxpayers and certainly to their, their customers. So I guess I'm asking you, if you wouldn't mind, to deliver that message, even though you don't represent them on that side of the issue. But it's, it's something that we can't really hold against them, or something maybe that the Liquor Commission will take into account when determining whether or not a license will be issued. But I, I think it's something that we need to address in the future to see if that is the way that we can hold a hammer on some of these operators that aren't paying their taxes, but want to get liquor licenses to, you know, for their establishments.
I will absolutely pass that on to the client.
Okay. I'll make a motion to send to the state without a recommendation from the city council.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, and it's at this point, Mr. Harding, I object, because this is in my district. So I respectfully ask that you remove that motion and allow me to do what my voters in my community charged me with doing.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you. I do concur with, with Mr. Harding, and I understand your, that's why I kind of wish somebody from Voodoo was here, because it's not fair. I'm not going to take it out on, on, on you, because you're not the one in charge of paying the taxes. But as, we're both attorneys, and we know that if we take money from our clients and we put it in our trust account, and then we use it for our own personal gain, we'd get disbarred for that. What they're doing isn't any different. They're collecting taxes from their customers that then need to be paid to the city and the state, and so they're holding on to their customers' money, and their customers' money are the taxes that we're, we're collecting. So I, I think it's very unfortunate that they've gotten to the level that they've gotten to. I understand, especially businesses, sometimes you have good months, bad months. You might get a little behind, and then you got to make up, but the amount, I mean, I think it's close to $56,000. I have Ms. Waller in the back who's shaking her head, "Yes, I got that right." That's a lot of money when you're only talking about a small percentage of sale. So I just think that it's an unfair advantage that they're taking, even amongst their competitors who are paying the tax. And I, you know, I really would encourage them to get on top of that and get on, on a payment plan, because I just don't think it's, it's fair business practice for them and for the rest of our, of the business owners in our city. So, thank you.
Certainly, that's not lost on us as council, or I think the client after we've spoken with them about that. So what I would like to note to the council, that I believe that they have paid the occupational taxes, since it at least has come to our offices' attention. Most of that was this morning. They're on a payment plan for two additional small payments, but two of the locations have been taken care of as of today.
Thanks for that information.
Okay. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just have one quick question, Mr. Houghton. Do you know how many locations Voodoo Taco operates in Omaha?
I believe three.
Three locations? Okay, thanks.
Okay. There's no further lights. There is a motion and a second for no recommendation. Seeing no further lights, roll call.
Melton.
There is light now, Mr. Bagley.
Mr. President, thanks. Just to clarify, we cannot deny their liquor license due to the back tax issue, whether it was paid or not, but if the council makes a no recommendation to Lincoln, Mr. Koozie, can you confirm what that means legally, please?
Matt Koozie, Law Department, you are correct, Councilman Bagley, that standing alone with no other issues involving this liquor license application, the non-payment of the city's restaurant tax, taking that money and not remitting it to the city, is not a sufficient legal basis to deny a, to send a denial down to the Liquor Control Commission. A vote of no recommendation basically just goes down to the Liquor Control Commission as that they will, as they do with any recommendation from the council, make their own independent determination as to whether a liquor license should be given. So this is in effect just the council remaining silent. You're not supporting that, you're not disapproving it, you're just not, you're remaining silent.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Koozie. And my colleague and friend, Councilman Rowe, asked how many locations, and you answered. I Googled that, because I knew there was one in Exarbin that's in my district, and there's one, I think, on 25th and Farnham. Is there one more, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Again, Mr. President, thanks for, I snuck in there at the end, but I, I wanted to make sure I, I understood that on what the no recommendation meant, if that's what is approved here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The City of Omaha has other means to collect debt. Therefore, I will be voting to recommend that the license be issued. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Harding.
If, if, if that is to mean that there are other ways to collect debt, if you're, if the council member's talking about handing it over to a collection agency, we only get half generally is, is what that, when you hand it over to a collection agency, you're only receiving about half of what the fine is. The collection agency is the one that receives that. So they're cheating the taxpayers out of money again. So if we're relying on a collection agency to collect that, the unpaid taxes to the City of Omaha, we're just losing again.
Ms. Johnson.
Um, yes, let me be clear. The City of Omaha has other mechanisms, such as collection agencies, to acquire debt. I, city council member, does not have the responsibility to collect that debt for the City of Omaha. Am I clear now regarding my message?
Yeah, you just confirmed exactly what I said. I talked about the collection agency, and we have to pay a fee to the collection agency to collect that debt.
I just want to know if I'm clear. That's all I want to know.
You're clear that the taxpayers will get cheated again.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second for our no recommendation. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Item seven, to consider a Class CG liquor license for Ude Lali located at 4916 Underwood Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Hannah Setche. I'm an attorney with Baird Home Law Firm here in Omaha, right across the street. I'm, I'm the attorney for Ude Lali, and I'm asking for your yes vote on the Class C liquor license application before you, and it's with the Class G bottling endorsed, or Growler endorsement, I apologize. My client, Tim Steinbach, he's the, the manager for the liquor license, and he's the executive director of Ude Lali. He's with me also, and if I could have him join me at the podium, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. So then I'll, I'm here to answer any legal questions you have. I've helped prepare the application that complies with Chapter 55 and your, your rules as well, so I'm happy to answer any legal questions you have. And then my client, Tim, can tell you how to pronounce the name, where the name came from, and any other questions you have about the application as well.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Hi, Tim Steinbach. I'm the executive director of Ude Lali.
And your address, Tim?
Oh, I'm sorry, 5360 South 156 Court.
Okay. So you're here to answer questions?
Sure.
Okay. I might have some for you here in a second, but first we'll ask if there's any other proponents that want to speak. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. I'll just engage a little bit, since this is in my district, and a longtime and popular location in Dundee, the former Marks Bistro, of course. So I want to welcome you there. I know you've been doing a lot of work at the site, even today, out in the cold and in the street there, and we look forward to having this location reactivated as part of the Dundee Business District, a very key location right there. It is a bit of a unique business model, though, and I want to make sure you have a chance to talk, to talk to us about that and tell us about it, because I think it's noteworthy and something I support.
Sure, absolutely. We're a nonprofit entity. We filed for a 501(c)(3). We haven't yet received the determination from the IRS, but that's a little bit of lengthy process, so we're going through that as well. But it's our social enterprise, is we're going to train people coming out of incarceration with job skills in the restaurant industry. We've partnered with Metropolitan Community College, and they've created a curriculum for us, so the people that will be going through our program, our three-month program, will also be receiving college credit at Metro that they can then hopefully take with them to go to Metro and continue on their culinary education, or stay with us, or go out and become positive members of society.
Excellent. And about how many employees will you have?
We'll have 17 employees, but we'll have at any given time between three and nine program participants.
And you're the actual manager of the restaurant?
I'm the executive director of the 501(c)(3). We have a general manager, his name is Ben Dabney, and he's been with Herb Saint for the past six years in the Sam- fan, so.
Good. And it sounds like a pretty similar menu to Marks, or at least you've guaranteed to keep the macaroni and cheese, right?
We are guaranteed to keep the macaroni and cheese. We like to say Marks 2.0. Marks was fantastic, and, and we have a great chef by the name of Doug Case that is adding to that, so.
Great. I think it'll be a nice fit there. I know you've done a nice job of reaching out to the neighborhood associations, too. I know they're supportive, so I would support this application today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll second the motion to support this, and I, I wanted to thank you guys for...
How about you make the motion, then? I'll second it.
I, I will make the motion, okay? I didn't know if anybody made one. I'm proud to make a motion on this, and Councilmember Fesserson's district, the work you do for, people need a second chance, and when people serve their debt for whatever crime they committed, their life has to go on, and you're helping people with your partnership through Metro to get people back on their feet, to get them some structure, working hours, getting a paycheck, and I, I just think that's a tremendous thing for the city, and I, I know Councilmember Fesserson and I have talked about it, he's filled me in, and he beams with great joy of your business here on 49th and Underwood, on what you do for the community, helping people have a second chance. So I'm glad to make that motion on behalf of Councilmember Fesserson's district, and thank you for employing men and women that don't need to be thrown out on the wayside. They need to get on their feet, and you help them do that, and then they become productive members of society, stay out of the life from their past by having good people helping them, and that macaroni and cheese sounds real good right now. I'll look forward to visiting, and I really wish you nothing but continued success, and thank you for what you do here. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hug.
Greetings.
Aye.
If I didn't know anything about either one of you or your business, just knowing that you have partnered with Metropolitan Community College, just based on that, I would blindly support this liquor license today. I know firsthand the extent of the vetting Metro does before they partner with anybody. So congratulations on that, because that tells me a lot, and I just want to say good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just would like to say thank you for your investment in this community.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
And when do you open? That's the big question.
First week of March.
All right. Thanks. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class CG liquor license for Macadoodles located at 3409 South 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Just go.[1755.71]
Just go. Okay. Hi, I'm Tom Belford. I'm a member of 3409 LLC, which is a franchisee of Macadoodles. Macadoodles is a retail liquor store with a high quality of service. There are currently about 11 of them in Missouri, and we're going to be the first franchisee in Nebraska. This is Greg Coleman. He's with us. Both of our office addresses are 7011 Haskell Street here in Omaha, 68124. I forget doing that at the beginning.
It's okay.
So it's an interesting concept, but it's more focused on high, high service quality. And you go to a lot of liquor stores today and walk around and look at liquor, but we're geared towards more helping people make intelligent solutions and selections with whatever they're looking for. Our building is currently under construction, really on the northeast corner of 72nd and Grover. We've been involved in that area for quite a while now, and I'm not sure what else we can say.
Okay. Good for now. We'll see if there's any questions for you. I'll ask if there's any other proponents that want to speak today. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Tom and Greg, good to meet you in person. Good to meet you again, Tom.
Yeah.
We met before.
Yes.
Greg, I still crack up when I, we can't take ourselves seriously, but I, when I was going through the agenda on Thursday, and I saw this was in my district, and I looked through the attachment, and I called you, and you answered, and I'm just telling the public this because it just still cracks me up, but you said I sounded like a robot. So I said, no, this is Councilman Bagley, and we had a great discussion on Macadoodles, and I always try to get better every day in my job, and by that conversation I have with you, I will make sure I identify myself better than a robot. So thanks for talking to me on Thursday, but if you want to tell, Tom did a great job when we talked beforehand on high service quality is what you want Macadoodles to be. So for people out there listening on the northeast corner of the Maverick Landing, 72nd and Grover, the hotels there, it's being developed. There's a Scooters that I sneaked through and grabbed there. Tell us about Macadoodles. I know you thought you might be open by St. Patrick's Day, maybe not, but give the whole world a nice little infomercial on what your business is going to be like.
Yeah, MH Landing is actually what it's called, the 72nd and Grover corner. We got Home Two Suites and a True by Hilton Hotel in that area, a Scooters. We're building a Fairfield Inn by Marriott in that area. Salty Dog is also going in there from Council Bluffs. They're coming into that area as well, that MH Landing. And then Macadoodles, it's going to be a 7,000-square-foot retail liquor store, convenience store, easy access in and out, and I think the city will really, really enjoy it.
And that's a great location right off of I-80 and 72nd, and all the development in Exarban Village and everything going on. That has been a long time eyesore for years, and now if you look at the transformation today and the great investment that you're making here, along with the other things you mentioned, I'm so happy to make a motion to support this, and I wish you nothing but the best. And Tom, you have longtime roots in Omaha with Johnny Gentleman, going back with your dad, and
Right.
It's great to see you investing and supporting Omaha, and I know you'll be successful, and I wish you nothing but the best. Thanks for coming down today.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a motion and a second. I think you had Councilman Bagley when you said you're opening St. Patrick's Day.
Well...
It'll be close. We'll see. We hope, we hope, yes.
I wouldn't plan on it.
It'd be a great day, but yeah, maybe a little later.
Sounds good. No further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Maximos Cantina located at 2613 North Main Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name's Rex Moats with Moats Law Firm. I represent the applicant in this matter, Max Elsavito, who's personally present. The application's for a Class I liquor license. There's been a change of ownership. Fred Hunziker has been kind enough to let Max purchase Maximos, and we, of course, had to start all over again with the, with the license, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 10 and 11 can be considered together for Copper Ridge Replat 58, located northeast of 157th Street and Laurel Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Jeff Sol with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 12 through 15 can be considered together for Westbrook Hills located at 13712 Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 12 and 13, ordinance is to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R5 District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 12 through 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brett Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. Here for any questions. This final plat obviously substantially conforms to our preliminary plat, but here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. The only thing I have complaint on number 12, it's the same as me and Mayor Dow was working on on Locust Street to put that toll bridge. Will we be able to do agriculture in this area when you change it? Because we're going to be growing some products from Africa, and we might have to have some of that land, and they keep giving it for development.
Right, Donnie, you got to speak.
Oh, sorry.
About the development, yeah.
So I apologize. In the meantime, since we're going to be doing that, would that land be also available for that purpose on 100, what is it, 37th and Military from industrial to, industrial, is that where you're going?
Ag.
Ag, yeah, agriculture.
It doesn't sound like it from the documents, I don't believe.
So we won't be able to grow any tea from West Africa in this area?
I don't think so.
Well, could you save some land for us as well as we move forward? And I was telling Ms. Johnson, a good thing can turn, a bad thing can turn into a good thing, because we've been working on Locust Street for a long time. We'll just fix that entrance and put the toll bridge at, Harold Dow recommended that I told him we should put.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents to these items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 16 through 22 were held on January 9th.
Move the approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items 23 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, and I'll note just for council members, we have the applicants for both numbers 23 and 24 by Zoom if needed. Any proponents or opponents on these items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement between Cox Communications and the city of Omaha in the amount of $450,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to BMI Janitorial Group in the amount of $61,400 for janitorial services to be utilized by the Street Maintenance Division is communication in opposition.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Rodney Johnson, 6716 North Ridge Drive, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. Opponent, one, I don't think that the award to a Tier 2 S B would be in compliance with Charter 10-200.3 Section D, and if it is, I'd like to understand what priority means. Maybe the law department can help us explain what priority means in that section. I also don't think that an award to BMI would help fight poverty with expediency of necessity, basically like 10-200, which is another charter item. So I'd like to be an opponent to that. I don't understand how we continue to use the SEB program and not follow the directions for what the SEB program stood for, and I appreciate you, Mr. Fesserson, because in 2015, you pointed out that error, and you spoke about cleaning up that error to the World Herald. So I'm confident that going forward, we won't continue to do the same thing and ignore what the SEB program is all about. I'm pretty sure I'll be back here next week or in a couple of weeks because the department heads do not know what they're doing when it comes to that program, and they're trying to award another contract to a non-SEB, even though it's 100% SEB certified. So I speak as opponent, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Castrejon. My address is 4716 South 95th Plaza. I'm just a little concerned of basically the contract that was awarded to BMI. The reason why is because, I mean, this is my first time here. So there are seven buildings that are quite huge in square footage. Every building, it requires about two individuals, two people working per night, and based on all the math that I did and compared to the 61,000 annually, it doesn't add up to paying the minimum wage to employees, plus their other expenses, plus all their equipment, plus the taxes that these companies got to pay for having employees on a regular basis. I'm not understanding how is that this company is going to be able to pay people and the quality of work that they're going to provide to the city of Omaha.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rodney, if you could come back up. Mr. Johnson, you asked a question when you were here earlier in your remarks that you made in regards to the denial of this. Can you repeat that request, that question?
Well, when you're reading the charter, the charter lays out specifically, you know, what the departments are supposed to do, which is to solicit the contracts to SEBs. I think the city council and the mayor created a great program, and then when you get into Section D of the charter, it lays out the priorities. It says priorities are as such, Tier 1 ESB to Tier 2 ESB, and then Tier 1 SB to Tier 2 SB. So, but there's no clarification of what priority means. You know, if SEB, Tier 2 or Tier 1 ESB is supposed to be the low bid, well, there's no benefit to the program. You know, if I'm the low bid, I'm just going to be competitive on the low bid. You know, there's no boost to me putting employees in that area and putting employees in that neighborhood because it does me no good. So if, if, if someone can explain to me what priority means, you know, I think we could put this situation to bed.
So can someone answer the question, what priority means?
We have law here. There's one guy there.
That can be law, that can be HRR, whoever the expert is regarding what, the question that's being asked, if they would answer, and we know who, who is responsible for answering these questions. So do I.
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney. With respect to your specific question, again, the issues that Mr. Johnson raises are similar to issues that he has raised in a federal civil rights lawsuit challenging, again, another contract he has with the city. And so again, as I indicated this morning, I'm happy to meet one-on-one with any individual council member to discuss these issues in a confidential privileged meeting with respect to Mr. Johnson's claim or question about if somebody could just answer to him what privilege means. He has retained an attorney, and I would encourage him to seek clarification from his own attorney on the interpretation of laws. And again, as I indicated earlier this morning, this is an issue that is currently present in his other case against the city that is being explored and addressed, and will reach a resolution in that case. But I'm happy to meet with you one-on-one in a privileged setting to discuss this issue between now and the third and final reading of this ordinance, if you would like.
So you're not able to answer that question?
I'm not willing to able it in this forum at this time.
Perhaps you can answer this question. What are the specific regulations or policies guiding the decision that was made regarding this award?
Councilmember Johnson, I guess I would direct you to the Omaha Municipal Code sections on the small and emerging small business program for the ordinances that control the implementation of that program. I guess I don't know if that answers your question or...
But HRR is here, so perhaps they can answer that question. There are specifics. Someone made a decision to make the award to the winner. What are the basis for that decision that was made? It's a simple question, requires a simple answer. If you don't have the answer, perhaps HRR has the answer. Someone made the decision to award this bid. Where's, I'm simply asking, what were the basis for that decision that was made?
Councilmember Johnson, I guess the only additional comment I would indicate is that this is an award of a contract bid by the Public Works Department, so it wouldn't be the Human Rights and Relations Department that would have made the decision to evaluate the bids that were received, compare them against the specifications for what was promulgated and published, and make an award determination on that. It would be the Public Works Department, not the Human Rights and Relations Department.
Well, thank you for clearing that up. So now we're still with a question unanswered. So I guess public work, we're dancing around you coming to an answer.
Bob Stube, Public Work. So this is a contract that was put out for bid for services at six different facilities, cleaning services. We received three bids for this particular project, and we lowered, we awarded a recommending award to the lowest and best bidder, which is BMI, which is in front of you today.
And what was the criteria used to make, to arrive at your destination point?
Bob Stube, Public Work. All the contractors submitted information relative to the specifications. It's been reviewed by staff in concurrence with HR and R, and this is the recommendation to award to BMI.
Okay, and you used the word in concurrence with HRR? So now we have the dance to do for HRR to come up and answer the question.
Bob Stube, Public Work. Yeah, I'm not sure that this is a dance. Again, is that when we go through an effort of putting together a set of specifications, we get bids back through the proper channels, we develop a document that goes in front of city council. It is signed off by myself, it's signed off by HR and R, signed off by the finance director, and signed off by the mayor. So that's what's in front of you today.
Okay. Question, HRR, still asking a question. If you wouldn't mind coming to the mic. If you wouldn't mind coming to the mic.
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney, again, councilmember Johnson, because the implementation of these specific provisions under the Small and Emerging Small Business Program implicate pending claims made by Mr. Johnson and federal litigation. I would, again, it would be my recommendation that your, the answer to your question be provided in a privileged confidential session between now and third reading. We're more than willing to meet with you to answer these questions for you, just not in this forum.
Perhaps you should have met with me before now and therefore I could have applied due diligence in my voting process. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. We did a memorandum that was very vague and general. Again, you have no idea what question I'm going to ask of HRR. So, you are impeding upon me asking a question. HRR, please.
Kaylin DeHilios, Director of Human Rights and Relations Department.
Christian Espinoza, Assistant Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department.
Thank you. Please explain to me your program, the SEB program. There are some questions regarding what that program's look like. I guess your lawyer has stepped up to the mic so that he can interfere, but let's let you have that, have the floor.
Again, councilmember Johnson, we are more than willing to meet with you to discuss these questions and provide answers to you in a confidential privileged closed meeting with you. I would remind you that there is no vote on this issue today. There is only second reading and public hearing. We are more than willing to schedule a time to meet with you to provide you with ample information and ample time before you are asked to vote on this matter at a future council meeting.
I believe my question to HRR regarding the services they provide as it relates to SEB is a valid question. It's a general question. It doesn't put you in the harms way of a lawsuit. It's a general question. They should be able to answer that.
Councilmember Johnson, because this question could impact current federal litigation the city is defending, I'm going to advise the representatives of the Human Rights and Relations Department not to answer your question here today. But again, we are more than willing to make ourselves available to you to answer your question in a confidential privileged discussion outside of the public room.
So, HRR is not able to answer the question regarding what the role of the SEB program is to the city of Omaha and to constituents in the city of Omaha?
I don't think that is an accurate representation of...
Well, then answer the question regarding the role of SEB.
Again, I'm going to advise them not to answer the question in this forum, but we are more than willing to meet with you in a private privileged session to answer your questions at that time.
So, because we are responding this way, we are not being transparent in terms of, I mean, if all we're doing is simply answering the question regarding what SEB's role is, that is a general question. In fact, we can go to the website, pull it up, read it, and call it out. But the unwillingness to state what it is, hiding behind a legality is just, it just shows that we're not willing to be transparent. So, the question regarding what the role of SEB, I don't need to have that question answered outside of this forum because it's for the purpose of the community and not behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Weason. I just want to comment that I want to...
Just a second, I'll call you back up.
Mr. Weason, I just want to thank you. You're representative of the taxpayer. You're an attorney for the city of Omaha. There's a pending lawsuit against the city of Omaha. That is against the taxpayers of the city of Omaha in the event we were to lose. I appreciate the fact that you're doing your job. You're zealously representing your client and you're doing it in an ethical way and you're protecting the citizens. I understand that for non-lawyers, it may be difficult to understand what sometimes lawyers are doing, but this is not the right forum for depositions, so to speak, of people that, in our city, that may be involved in the lawsuit. And that's exactly what was attempting to be done today. So, I just want to say, I do understand your position. It has nothing to do with transparency. It has to do with doing your job.
Thank you, councilmember.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I take exception to the fact that I am not a lawyer and then taking it to the next level to say that I was out of line. You have no right, no ability, while it's true that you are a lawyer, Ms. Milton, you have no right, you have no ability to tell me when I'm right or wrong regarding my line of questioning.
I was just talking to Mr. Weason.
No, about me and my question. You have no right to ask or say something about my line of questioning. The question that I asked doesn't require a lawyer. It simply asked the question of what the role of the SEB program is. And the fact that we're doing all this dancing to answer a simple question that I might ask, add, is on the website to tell us what that role is, gives the appearance that we're hiding something. Whether we are or not, it gives that appearance. Maybe we don't care what the appearance is in terms of what we look like. But that's the messaging that we're doing. Mr. Johnson, please.
Thank you.
Which Johnson, this Johnson?
No. I think we were distracted. I do have a federal lawsuit that's separate of this current bid and my question was only in regards to this current bid. And I do take exception with what Mr. Stube said, that BMI offered the lowest and best bid, because I seen the council light up with the liquor licenses and we talked about, you know, all of the money that will be spent in Omaha and how it would impact Omaha. And I am under the impression that any bid that helps fight poverty in the city of Omaha would probably be best for Omaha, you know? So, for him to say that the bid, that BMI offered the best bid, their bid doesn't help fight poverty, you know? They do not live in the impoverished area. And for the Human Rights and Relations Department to not be able to answer what the SEB program stands for or what it means because of pending litigation in a completely separate lawsuit, you know, this isn't a lawsuit. I am the second bidder, right? I am the only Tier 1 ESB and I'm asking a question, you know? It's a simple question, what does priority mean? It's published, it's put in the law books. What does it mean? And if you have to go to court, if you have to sue the city to get those answers, that's counterproductive of what we're trying to do. I don't want to sue the city to find out what this priority means. I should be able to call Human Rights and Relations or sit down with the attorney and say, what does this mean? Am I misinterpreting this? You know, so it's disappointing that we would have a stalemate when we're talking about the SEB program and that the council members would be so saddened. But at the same point, we'd be so excited that we were getting liquor licenses to help people go out and celebrate, you know? I watched Mr. Arden shake his head when we were talking about this. This is the SEB program. I didn't create it. You guys did. You voted on it and you rave about it. In 2015, you said that it's failing. It continues to fail, but we're not doing anything about it. We continue to award to people that are not in the area and we do not have an understanding of how the program is supposed to work. So, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
I'll move the approval.
Just a public carrie into that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I have one question for Mr. Koozie. There is an appeal process. Currently, this agenda item is just whether we approve the bid or not. If there are other bidders, such as Heartland or somebody that wanted to appeal, there is an appeal process for a bid denial. Is that correct?
That's correct. The code provides for an appeal process for people whose bids were rejected and that process is made known to the bidders.
And is it, it's past the time for any of the bidders to appeal at this point? Is that correct?
No, it is not.
Okay. So, if somebody wanted to appeal this bid, their denial, they could still do that?
Mr. Weason is shaking his head, so perhaps I misspoke. I will defer to...
My apology. Mr. Weason, I should've called you up.
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney. The appeal is available only to bidders who have had their bid rejected. In this case, no bidder has had their bid rejected. The department just made a recommendation for the award to the lowest and best bidder. So, the other two, it's my understanding there were three bidders. The two successful bidders did not have their bids rejected. They were just not determined to be the lowest and best.
And I think that's important to note. So, there were no bids rejected. They just chose the lowest and best.
Correct.
And the three bids, according to the paperwork attached to our agenda, BMI, the one that's on our agenda for approval, was 61,400. I believe it said BJ's is 110,000 and then Heartland was 142,000. So, there was a significant difference in the bid price that the taxpayers of Omaha would have to pay, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Weason, can you come back up? May I ask, what was the difference between the question that you asked, that I asked, and then Ms. Milton asked a question regarding the process? No, 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 no. The significant amount of money, the difference between A and B. You were compelled to answer that question, but yet you cannot answer a question.
Ms. Johnson does have the floor.
Again, Mr. Weason, if we're, we have a lawsuit and you hid behind the lawsuit in answering my questions, then I would think it would only be fair that you would have denied answering Ms. Milton's question.
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney. The reason why I felt the ability, felt that it was acceptable to answer Ms. Councilmember Milton's question was because it dealt with bid rejection appeals processes. It was a clarification. There was no bid rejection or appeal in this case versus your question dealt with interpretation of the small and emerging small business ordinances. That interpretation, those questions are relevant to Mr. Johnson's current lawsuit against the city. So, again, did not feel that it was appropriate to answer those questions in this public setting because they touch on current pending litigation. But as I indicated before and will indicate again, I am more than willing to meet with you in a private privileged setting to answer your questions and to talk about the claims and issues that he has raised.
Thank you.
Now for the lights. Next item, please.
Item 46, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri NRD for the Papio watershed regional flood control detention basin near 180th and 4th Street.
Public carrie on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal group 2024-01.
Public carrie on number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 48, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for weeds group 2024-02.
Public carrie on number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? This is about weeds and litter, right, Donnie, number 48?
Let me make sure. I didn't wear my glasses, so I'm gonna make sure, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And I understand there's a lot of hot air in the room, so my glasses are fogged. In the meantime, this weed, is that the medical marijuana weed you're speaking?
Nope, it's not.
Okay, I gotta get my glasses.
Any other opponents to number 48? Seeing none, public carrie is closed. Next item.
Item 49, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Trees Group 2024-03.
Public carrie on number 49 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning employment classifications by adding Park and Recreation Planner III Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public carrie on number 50 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Deb Xander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed. Next item.
Item 51, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the salary for the employment classification for application Development Manager Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public carrie on number 51 is today. Proponents, please.
Deb Xander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 52, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by changing the title of the class specification for Process Control Systems Technician 1 to Process Control Systems Technician Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public carrie on number 52 is today. Proponents, please.
Deb Xander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? This is on a personnel classification for a controls technician.
And I did put my glasses on, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, sir. Forty-four, no, 49, 28th or 52nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, councilman, and I did see my glasses. Would this be possible to attach that toll bridge on 16th and Locust Street?
Donnie, you're out of order. That's not this topic. Any other opponents, number 52? Seeing none, public carrie is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Elavan Inc. to provide merchant card services.
Public carrie on number 53 is today. Proponents, please.
Donna Waller, City Finance.
Karen Nelson, US Bank, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with US Bank to provide online banking services.
Public carrie on number 54 is today. Proponents, please.
Donna Waller, City Finance, here to answer any questions.
Karen Nelson, US Bank, here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carrie is closed.
Item 55, an ordinance to authorize and accept the bid of Alexander Lawn and Landscape Inc. in the annual amount of $25,180.
Public carrie on number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Trevor Towey, Omaha Professional Firefighter, 6005 Grover Street. Thank you, Mr. President, member of the council. I'm here as a proponent of this ordinance, not necessarily for the company that's in question, but of for the, what the ordinance does. I'm sure it's a great company. They do a great job, but this ordinance is important because it allows public safety officials to focus on their job of public safety. And, you know, I don't pretend to be an expert on policing, but I'm sure policing, like firefighters, there's a call for emergency services has increased. So, my hope with this, that this ordinance will, not only will it help small businesses, maybe it will provide new jobs, but it's gonna allow policing to focus on policing. So, my hope with this ordinance is that maybe there'll be some expansion. Maybe after this, there'll be some consideration to expand to the fire department, also allow my members to focus on keeping Omaha safe, keeping the public safe, rather than on facility maintenance. And so, therefore, I support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Donnie, it has to be to this contractor. I'm gonna call you out of order, okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fesserson, I've been happy to go in your district. It's a wonderful job they're doing removing this snow, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, supporting the fire department because when they get their new location, they're gonna need, or can you attach this new deal to the new location of the new fire department that's gonna be moving in four years with the police station downtown?
That's not what this does.
Okay, sorry.
Any other proponents to number 55? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley.
Trevor, I got a question for you since you came down to speak today.
Yes, sir. Trevor Towey, Omaha Professional Firefighter.
Good afternoon, Trevor. Thanks for being here today. You're speaking on an item that is specific to the facilities for the police department. Station 34, which is a block from my house, which you work at, when it snows, firefighters, correct me if I'm wrong, are those firefighters from your station, 34, on 48th and Mayberry, when it snows, are those your firefighters, men and women, out removing snow at the station there?
Oh, yeah, that's 100% accurate.
Has that always been the case?
It always has been the case, you know? So the other day, when we got 10 inches of snow, we had six to eight firefighters out there making sure the aprons were cleaned off with shovels so the fire truck could respond to all the calls.
Okay, and is that equipment provided by the city?
Yeah, shovels.
Okay.
They got some snow blowers, too.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you supporting for the police facilities here today. Interesting that the men and women at the firehouses remove their own snow. That, I guess, when I seen that up there and then I see her speaking today, it made me think of that, so I appreciate you answering that for me today.
No, I appreciate the question.
Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the African American Empowerment Network in the amount of $50,012 and to authorize funding from the city of Omaha's fiscal year 2022 Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Barney, if you wouldn't mind coming up to answer a few questions.
Good afternoon. Willie Barney with the Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street. Good afternoon, Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon. Can you give me a sales pitch as to why this is important?
Yeah, one of the critical things, many of the people on the council know, for the last 17 years, we've been working in the community to help reduce gun violence in the city, working very closely with neighborhoods, churches, community-based agencies, police department, and have had some really measurable success. More work to be done, but we've had great success. One of the things we've learned over time is how do we better invest in some of the small independent people that are doing work 24/7 on the street? And we're thankful that the city of Omaha saw an opportunity with one of the grants that they have been managing to be able to bring training to those individuals, which we're hopeful will provide more opportunities for them to get even more involved and be a part of contracts down the road with various organizations. So the ones that we have had initial conversations with have been very receptive and excited about the opportunity to be able to apply for these training dollars. So it's really geared towards those grassroots organizations that at times have been left out when funding or training opportunities are available.
And it says here that you have 18 professional development scholarships?
Yes.
Have you identified who those individuals would, that would receive those scholarships?
No. As working with the city, as we identified the opportunity and they brought it to us to begin to look at who might be available, the city was very much wanting to make sure it's an open process, so it would be open to any of those smaller grassroots individuals to be able to apply. So there'll be an application process that we hope to get started in February, so it will be open to those that, hopefully, again, the goal is that there are people that have been doing the work but maybe have never received that level of training or the opportunity to go to a national conference because of lack of resources. So it will be an open application process.
So the recipients of these scholarships, will they be of the area in which you're targeting to reduce crime?
Yeah, the areas, and then I know Amber's from the city, she could probably, because some of this is connected to an existing grant, so I think part of that obviously would be identifying areas that we have been over the years as far as higher levels of gun violence and how we might be able to address that and who's currently serving those areas. But she may be able to give any more insight on that.
Amber is here in the audience. If she could come up and kind of, I would like to know what zip codes are we looking at in terms of reducing violence?
Good afternoon. Amber Parker, 1819 Barnum Street, Mayor's Office. Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, what we're looking at right now is just getting the subaward agreement through and approving the partnership with the Empowerment Network. You'll see a scope of work is attached to the council documents where it kind of walks us through the next steps. After we get approval, we'll formalize the application process. We're advertising, you know, through Omaha 360, SOVIP is another targeted place. Everything will occur east of probably 42nd Street would be my presumption, but it'll be based upon who the applicants end up being. Folks will self-select into the opportunity. So based upon our plan that we've submitted to the Bureau of Justice Assistance that we've put together and that has been approved, we're looking at six scholarships in the first year and then 12 scholarships in year two. So we're trying to kind of like ramp it up, engage how the response goes, and then continue to do the work with the community to build it up. And hopefully, our goal is to do another application where we would continue this funding beyond this grant project period. So it's really in the formulative stages right now. First, we have to get your permission to approve the subaward before we can move forward.
Thank you. And so to me, based upon what you just described and what Willie described, would it be safe to say that this would be coming from individuals, that this would be supporting crime prevention in areas in which I serve?
It is likely that that would be where it is occurring. Again, it's based upon who would be ultimately applying once we put the opportunity out, if it's approved.
Okay.
The community, sorry, the Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant Award has been before this body. You all approved it probably 18 months ago. It centers around the Encompass Program with the Med Center, and that is the grant launch. This is an extension of that award, trying to do more work in the community with the violence interrupters. And that work all occurs really in eastern Omaha.
Right. So, thank you, Amber. So Willie, so since you mentioned grassroots individuals is who you're looking at targeting for these scholarships, again, would someone in Ms. Milton's district be someone that you would consider for an application? Because if that is the case, then help me understand how that would help from a grassroots perspective.
Yeah, I think, as Amber just mentioned, Willie Barney, I don't want to find you to do that again, Willie Barney, Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street. Councilwoman, really looking at those areas, again, through the mapping, the data that's provided by the police department, so we can be very precise in the areas, but it will be based on those that actually apply. And perfectly, hopefully, again, those that have been doing work, and when I say grassroots, it's not just an upstart necessarily, it's someone that has been doing the work but has not been recognized with either the training or the resources to be able to do the work. So there's no guarantee until we see the actual applications coming in.
So if I were to support this initiative, would you consider or be willing to provide that information upon notifying the applicants that they're receiving those scholarships? Because what I would hate to do is vote on something today, not today, I'm just figuratively speaking. And then, you know, when you guys have all of the information, the data, and the outcome is something different than what I envisioned, I just wouldn't feel comfortable with that.
Sure. I'm not sure, the key question, but just as the process goes forward with the applications, once we have approval to move forward with the application, I'm sure that information will be shared with the city council as a whole because our goal, again, is to continue the progress. And I think this next level of getting more of those grassroots organizations, some resources and training, will open us up to even more progress. So I think it'll be a part of the natural process. So hopefully, I answered your question, Councilwoman.
That did. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 57, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless in the amount of $61,140 to provide funding for the Housing Problem Solving Program.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. I would just note, we talked about this item this morning and also the previous item on our agenda that was approved as it applies to the voucher program for local hotels for the homeless in extreme situations. And we obviously had some extreme situations in our city the last few weeks with the weather, and so I'm glad that was approved today. And this item, I look forward to supporting next week as a companion piece, an engaged match with those candidates to find permanent supportive housing, not just emergency housing, which I think is a good thing to be doing. So I wanted to make that note of this particular item. Next item, please.
One public hearing can be held for items 58 and 59, ordinances to amend agreements with HDI Labs to amended amounts of $300,184 and $312,234.
Public hearing on items 58 and 59 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings are closed.
Item 60, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the University of Nebraska and Omaha in the amount of $27,082 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the city of Omaha's fiscal year 2021 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant.
Public hearing on number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Has to be specific to the grant, Donnie, as long as you're on topic.
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, supporter of Mr. Donald Trump and his win. In the meantime, sir, on number 57 you had mentioned?
This is number 60.
Okay, but I wanted to ask you about one question.
Nope. This is number 60.
Well, on number 60, there's a debate among myself and the students of this community. Can you attach another $30,000 so the students of this international community have an international law school and do the research at the same time on this number 60?
That's not number 60. You're out of order.
This is justice right here, sir. Do you part of justice?
Any other proponents to number 60?
Okay.
Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 61, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement from the Nebraska Crime Commission Fiscal Year 2024 Stop Violence Against Women Grant in the total program amount of $251,234.
Public hearing on number 61 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, item 62 through 85 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing under vote. Reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, a second. Roll call.
Milton, Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:22.